Your numbers? Say thirty, call the meeting to order with, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Item three, invitation for a citizen to schedule time on commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there any? Just come forward. You have, we give five minutes.
Five minutes.
Introduce yourself.
Perfect, yes. Good morning, my name is Brady Jansen. I'm with River View from Morris, Minnesota. River View is an ag business that operates dairies and beef feedlots. We're currently proposing to build a new dairy farm southeast of Brookings in Trenton Township. And on August twenty first, we'll be hosting a bus tour that'll travel from Brookings to one of our existing dairy farms near Wilmer, Minnesota. This tour will be open to the public and it's intended to give all interested parties an opportunity to see firsthand what one of our existing farms looks like. So I wanted to come here today and extend that invitation to all of the commissioners as well. The bus will leave from the Swiftel Center parking lot at eight thirty in the morning on the twenty first and it's scheduled to return around three thirty on that same day. Yeah, so given that proposed project and this upcoming tour, just wanted to introduce myself and pass out some information regarding the project and extend that invitation. So if you have any questions regarding what we're up to, or if any of your constituents have any questions, please, we would encourage you to give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I can pass this out.
Is there any other citizen? Okay, approval of the agenda. Approved as read. Consent agenda items, approval of minutes, approval of travel education requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of human services report. I have a motion.
No move.
Motion, second, discussion on eighth. Any additions or corrections, Stacy? All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Routine business, approval of claims.
Who approve it?
Second.
I do have one addition, the Department of Revenue claim I put in front of you, I set out on your desk this morning, so that would be included when you approve claims.
Okay, you had a motion, second, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Department head reports. Chris, would you like to start?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Not much to report, having not heard from our OHE decision yet. I was hoping that we would have that. We were thinking they had twenty days to respond, which would have been the third, and haven't received anything yet. So as soon as I get that, even if it's not, I won't wait for commission, I'll send out that decision to all of you. Hopefully it goes our way. Other than that, we're, our office is just continuing on with the row review, going hard. We are gonna finish it one way or another this year. We were scheduled to, we're, I think we're a little behind and Larry's out of the office for some time now, but we're gonna push through and I'm gonna make sure we complete that project this year. Other than that, just to let you know that Jacob and I are gonna be traveling to the sedesis, which is the In Code Users Group Meeting on August seventeenth. Vicki's gonna be coming with us. And then on August twentieth through the twenty-second, Jacob and I are going to be traveling to the Beacon, our website conference. And we're gonna be taking the administrative portion course or classwork there, so we're the administrators of our website. So we set up all the users and subscribers and go through all those security changes and things like that, so it's good training for that. So that's all I really have right now. We're pretty smooth office, so.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
I see we have an eight thirty-five scheduled agenda item, we'll move on to that before we continue with Department head reports. Action to remove agreement number seventeen dash five-five, an application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Kleinjohn Farms Incorporated from the table. Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
You had a motion in second, we call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Discussion, I guess, Tom, would you like to come forward and kinda explain what your application is?
Hi, my name's Tom Kleinjohn, I'm part of Kleinjohn Farms, along with my brother James and Russell and our wives. Application I thought was plain, but I understand it isn't. It just says drainage, but it is for field tile drainage that we can move from the corner of two oh six street and four sixty-fourth down along the west side of section twenty-two to the corner of two oh seven and four sixty-third. And our desire is to put a pipe underneath four sixty-four, which I think is County Road number five.
Yep.
And then it goes east on the south side of two oh five, two oh seven street, two oh six street to the river.
Yep.
This is kinda the last hurdle that we're trying to get over to make this come about. We've got a contractor in line, this is the last thing we kinda need to have happen and then he'll start ordering our supplies.
And basically the tile underneath the county road, it'll be a non-perforated and then the drain tile will go through that?
The, it's a non-perforated all the way along the west side of section twenty-two. It's to move the water so it doesn't have to go through the ditch or across the property of the, of Lois Thompson and Steve Sapp property.
Okay. Okay, any questions?
Is that, is there, I guess I'm not sure if you have the answer to this, but you know, I don't want to flood somebody else's property down, you know, depending on how much runoff and that kinda stuff we're talking about here. Obviously it's going into your property, correct? Is that right? It's going to the east there?
Going to the east and onto our property and from there it goes on to underground in a non-perforated pipe to the river through Kent Vanderwals.
And that's already existing in the Vanderwals?
Pardon?
That's already existing through Vanderwals?
No, no, this will be part of the project too.
Okay.
It starts at the river and goes backwards to the corner of two oh five and four sixty-four, where the water now is being discharged.
Okay, does this, does this affect, how does this affect Sapp's land there, Steve Sapp's land?
Well, he's one of them that has really encouraged us to do this. It, right now, there's a lot of surface water that goes onto his ground, a lot of it's surface drainage, some of it is the tile water that comes to the surface on the corner of two oh five and four sixty-four. Now, that's where discharge is now. Then it goes by surface for a mile into the, eventually into the Oakwood Outlet and eventually into the Sioux River.
Alright. Dick, do you have any concerns with this?
Well, the only partial one where he's going underground for that entire mile along section twenty-two, how deep will this be, Tom? As far as like, I'm worried about possibility of the freeze thaw season in late winter, early spring. Is there any possibility that that could get froze and then backwater up, back into your pasture up over there? Or come over the road possibly?
Don't think it'd be, I can't see where it'd be any worse than what it is now. Now it also, this is going to be laid in the field, it's not in the, not in the road right of way. And the water will be moving, I think, year round. So I don't think there's, there's that issue that it would stop and freeze.
Right, that answers my question, 'cause I thought with it being underground our entire mile length, that if there was an obstruction or a freezing, that could possibly create problems, but probably not anymore than they are now, so.
Maybe another part of your question was how deep it would be. It varies because of the lay of the land, but it's all got a slope. I think it, if I remember the plan, it was from two feet to four feet deep, from that mile to the next mile.
And it should, it should help the right-of-way, you know?
Yes.
Get the water out of that ditch, so.
And if you're wondering, this is in the area on five where we put that new box in about three years ago, so the water that he is changing over to the east side would improve our situation for drainage.
This has been something that's been visited with, with, I think this is the third highway superintendent. At one, at one time, the highway department was so involved and wanted to change that so bad that they were even considering helping to finance the bore underneath the county road at that time.
I guess I look for, motion approved?
We already have a motion on the floor from the last meeting, so it's just.
Okay, we had a motion in second, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, we appreciate it.
Mike?
Morning. Good morning. While the foot traffic is picking up some, we did have actually almost more people coming in than phone calls for a change, so that's a good thing. And we had thirty-three veterans in the last two weeks, we had seventeen on the welfare side, we did make seventy-two calls, received seventy-two, made eighty calls out. One of the things that, today at noon, I'll be taking part in the, should've wrote it down, Salvation Army meeting. And this afternoon I'll be up on campus for a couple different things and they're also going to be hiring another position up there that they've asked us to come up and take part in, so I'll be talking a little bit about that. Otherwise, it's been fairly quiet on this part, we're getting ready for the conference out in Rapid City, but other than that, things are going pretty well.
Okay, any questions, Mike? Okay, thank you. Bert, are you here to give a report or just hanging out? Okay. Bob, would you like to come forward?
Good morning.
Morning.
The, since I was here, which has been probably a month ago, the big thing is we had a exercise actually scheduled for June seventeenth, a full-scale exercise in Mitchell that has still been postponed, it looks like we're gonna try to have it in August twenty-sixth, probably over in Huron area. But the reason we couldn't have it in Mitchell once again was they still got E. coli in their lake and we couldn't put our people in. And I have been gone for a while. The July eleventh, we had a severe weather incident in Brookings County and I'm glad to report that the severe weather response for this building was outstanding. We set the alarms off and everyone went to their proper location, we took citizens with us to the storm shelters and everything worked like it was supposed to. Though that particular storm system, the tornado warnings were sent out by the National Weather Service because of rotation in the clouds and weather radar and some video footage actually did show rotation, we was extremely lucky that we did not get a tornado that particular day, especially over by South Dakota State University's campus and just to the north. All, everything was there except for the tornado dropping out of the cloud, so thank goodness.
Pretty ugly.
And we did set alarms off in several different communities that day and people, some people questioning why we did that, but I slept pretty good that night. Anytime the National, the National Weather Service has got the radar that can show the rotation above ground that we can't necessarily see from the ground, so we're gonna go with the National Weather Service's recommendations. And obviously if law enforcement or fire department sees a cloud drop out, then obviously we'll set the alarms off for that too, but, so it's a joint, it's a team effort throughout Brookings County to report severe weather and know when to set off the tornado sirens or severe weather sirens. July eighteen to nineteenth, we had a FEMA course on how to conduct exercises here in this particular room, me and Richard both attended that. I went to the NACO conference and we'll be sending you out some, the resolutions from the NACO conference, I sent them and you have those before the next meeting, they just sent them out yesterday. And we had a zoning meeting on August the first, two thousand seventeen. Next week, there's a tri-state emergency management meeting in Sioux Falls, or there's a PPCC meeting today, or not today, tomorrow, at twelve noon over at the East Fire Station. Typically that's a Thursday meeting, but due to scheduling conflicts, they had to move that up to Wednesday. And the seventeenth of August, we've got a local emergency planning committee meeting. And August the seventeenth, we got a planning meeting scheduled at seven PM and there would be a public meeting on the revision of the zoning ordinance where we're gonna hear the administration, administrative plan. We had heard that once in a public meeting and the board wanted to fine tune it a little bit, so we scheduled another meeting and that meeting will be August the seventeenth. And the federal government, as of yesterday, about four o'clock, they dropped a new grant proposal that has a deadline of August twenty-two. And it's for pipeline safety grants and I'm working with our region, of course, we're in Region Six of the Office of Emergency Management. And it's short notice, but I wanted to get a consensus of the board on whether or not, if we can figure out how to do a large exercise within a year of the grant, if it would be, if the board would allow us to apply for the grant through Brookings County for the region and basically we'd be the one administering the grant and the money would come back into us and everything. It is a short turnover, August twenty-two, it has to be into the federal government. So there's, and I'll be more unhappy letting anybody look at it before it's submitted, obviously. Typically I do work with first planning district on these, I fill out most of the paperwork, I take it the first planning district and they review it and then we submit it. Typically we've got three months to apply, here we've got, looks like two weeks.
I think go for.
I mean, this type, this is the type of grant, we figure out how much it's gonna cost us, we apply for it and that's what they would allow.
Okay.
We'll take a look at that then and I'll keep the board updated on that. And last but not least, we just, I did meet with the nine-one-one communications center about the alerting of the storm that they, that we discussed and everyone's on the same sheet of music at the warning level. I do wanna commend the nine-one-one center, they worked real good, I mean, literally I was in the office and all of a sudden they started dropping these tornado warnings on us and I, one phone call and they started issuing the warnings. They was getting tired of hearing from me probably, but that's what it takes during tornado warnings.
Anything else? I have one question, citizen asked, Bob, is there any warning sirens that are not in a municipality in the county?
No.
They're all within, and they're either the city takes care of them or the fire department, correct?
The municipal governments are, if we, we test them once a month through the nine-one-one communications center. If let's say Sinai siren does not work, I call the city clerk or whoever, the mayor, and then they, they're responsible to keep the siren running.
Okay.
Brookings has ten, maybe eleven now with the newest addition. And then Sinai has one, Bruce has one, White has one, Aurora has one, and Vogga has two and Elton has one as far as I know, from ones that we've seen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Misty?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't have too much, just kinda wanted to give you an update. We're kind of on our downtime right now with spraying weeds. So we're basically mowing county road right-of-ways, DOT right-of-ways, wherever we need to catch up if there's patches of thistles that have come up after we've been there. I'm looking at next week, starting back spot spraying, DOT, county roads, townships. It may be a little early, but I think we need to get a jump on it and we'll go back and retrace our steps later in the fall. We will have, this is kinda early, but we will have a weed board meeting September fourteenth, that's our weed tour. We'll be touring the southeast section of Brookings County. Our ATV crew will be finished on Friday, so it'll just be down to three truck drivers then. There's also one more thing I have, the South Dakota Department Ag, Weed and Pest Commission will have a meeting down in Sioux Falls on September thirteenth. I will put a travel request in for that, but I'd like to go to that, simply because it's the US Fish and Wildlife is going to be there speaking on their behalf. We've had a lot of issues with their properties around our county and surrounding counties, so I'd like to go and see what they have to say and what kinda remedy they can come up with. But otherwise, any questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to update you, when the county took tax deed to two properties, one in White and one in Bruce, we went over two from the highway department and Marty from the sheriff's office and myself, and we secured the building, the highway department put new locks on and everything, so we are good to go there, it's been added on to our insurance. It's an old gas station is what the property is in White. In Bruce, it's just an empty lot, so we didn't have to do anything there, but we did inform the city of Bruce, we took tax deed to the property and if they have any mowing or anything like that, we would be responsible for that, so we did let them know on that. So I wanna thank Marty and the highway department for helping us take care of that, so that was good. And next week I'll be going with Chris and Jacob to a sedesis meeting in Oa Coma on Wednesday, and then we have our eight-county meeting next week also. So otherwise, nothing else different with our office, unless anybody has any questions. Thanks.
Marty? You have five minutes?
I can he-haw that much. Well, while everybody, while everybody in this building was snug in the basement, my staff and myself are out watching the clouds, so. But that's the, that's just part of the job. Just quickly, we've been busy at the sheriff's office, we had a incident on a violent domestic disturbance where the individual had a weapon, they got him in Bruce and that could've ended worse than it did, I commend my deputy for, two deputies for apprehending him and without incident and the person dropped the gun. If he would've turned with it still in his hand, it could've been a different outcome, but anyway, that turned out good. You know, in the jail right now, we've been staying down in the thirties. And you know, we started out in January at forty-nine per day in, or the first two months in the forties, and now we're staying in the thirties. The month of July, we were thirty-six point six daily population and today we have thirty-five. Our twenty-four-seven participants have come down too, from one-eleven to ninety-nine, which is kind of encouraging, so I don't know, we kinda, the trend is up and down, so who knows what is gonna happen in the next, what'll happen tomorrow? The problem that we're having right now is in the work release center, is that I only have six on work release and so the rest of them up there are either sentenced or pre-trial. We're having some problems with separation. When we have not getting along, I have no place to put them. So that's, you know, we're not in an emergency situation, but it's getting concerning for staff and so forth and sometimes on controlling, and so that's just something that we somehow gotta address in the future. You know, when we went into the jail expansion, we were talking two to three years, you know, now with checking on offsites and things, you know, we're probably looking to three to four years to do something, you know, in the meantime, what do we do in the meantime? So I don't wanna throw a wrench in things, but do we need the Band-Aid, something at the current location, that if we stayed there, that it still would fit into the expansion and if we moved, it would be the new, you know, the holdover, 'cause the old part of the jail, we're gonna remodel anywhere, so we need, I need some cell space where I can put people to separate when we have incidences. And so that's kinda what we're kinda leaning into right now. Now if Madison can do their expansion, we were ahead of Madison and now we're behind Madison, so if Madison can get their expansion going, it's, if we are still gonna be four years behind, we may have to think about housing some inmates at Madison, my sentenced ones, which is gonna cost us a little money. I'm just throwing this out just to prepare you in case we have to go into that type of scenario. Then the other thing, is the budget finalized? One thing that I didn't do in my budget process is that I didn't put any expansion for employees on the jail side. And even if we stay in the current location or we go to a different location, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to have additional, additional staff. Would it be wise to start preparing now and add full-time one a year, I mean, if we're four years... additional staff. Would it be wise to start preparing now and add full-time one a year? I mean, if we're four years out, we could add one a year, so we don't have such an impact on the fourth year for the jail. Just something to throw out. I don't know if we're, we're set in stone right now. I know the budget's almost... But I didn't plan for any, any employee growth on, on the jail side. And I'm just wondering, would it make sense to add a full-time each year for the next four years, and then wherever we're at, we're, I don't know. It's, I'm just throwing, I know I'm throwing some wrenches out, but, I was thinking that, at the end of, by the time we do our expansion, we're gonna have to increase, because if we're off, off-site, we're gonna have to increase with, uh, transportation and full-time staff for transport. So, anyway, look at it, if we stay or we go, we're gonna have to add employees. I'm in a little crunch right now. I've lost two full-time employees and three part-time. We've hired part-time back. It's, uh, part-time, it's hard to keep. They get full-time jobs and so forth, but, uh, I've lost two full-time employees, and that, that's a little tough on us. So, now we gotta replace two full-time. So, I'll have new staff, which, which I think we only have two misdemeanors in the place, so it's a, it's a tough, tough crowd.
I think by end of-
I bet you're glad that five minutes is only five minutes, 'cause now I could quit, then you guys could ponder.
End of September, we approved the budget, so.
I'm just throwing that out so that we don't have such an impact, 'cause, you know, we haven't figured in employees, full-time employees, so if we add one each year, by the time we do our expansion, we're not, hopefully, we'll, you know, I'm, I'm just throwing that out, is I didn't, I didn't plan for employees, you know, yet, and, and if we all of a sudden have to add three to five employees at the end of five years, that's gonna be an additional cost all at once too, so maybe we need to gradually do that. So, I'm just throwing that out. You, you, just, so. I'll quit then. If you, unless you guys have some quick questions. We had our, our, our national night out, um, last Tuesday, was it last?
Tuesday.
Last Tuesday? I think we had a good crowd for, for, yeah. So, I think, uh, Commissioner Bartley stopped by and says, "Put some tires on the UTVs," so we're gonna, we got tires ordered.
You'd get stuck on a grassy road with that thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have a nine o'clock, nine AM, two thousand sixteen closing audit report from Jeff Schaefer, Legislative Audit.
Is he here? He's not here yet?
Okay.
I'd-
Just move on.
I think we could move on with-
Rich.
With, with, yeah, Dix.
Good morning.
Morning.
The bridge work up on seven. Unfortunately, I gotta report, uh, paving will start either the end of this week or the beginning of next. However, they won't, uh, open the bridge till the guardrails are done, but that's scheduled immediately, if not sooner. Uh, Holloway Construction is hoping to start on our small structures and the bridge repair on six on August twenty-first. That's a week later. Originally, they were gonna start next Monday, but, um, they got delayed. Today, they're starting to do the rehab project on the bridge on six. It's just east and south of Bruce. They'll be starting with the grinding. Uh, we're up there helping remove the grinding. And then also, um, if people would ask, that's a, a state-administered project because of the grant, and so, um, we participate very much on a limited basis. However, um, usually, if they'd call me or somebody, we'd probably have an answer if someone had a question in particular. Uh, then, uh, in the two thousand eighteen grant process, uh, one thing we could think about, and I'm, I don't need an answer today, but just food for thought, that we could also include an application for that structure one forty-seven, two hundred on Highway twelve, and then take all the money we were originally gonna possibly contribute anyway, if we did it on our own, uh, that we would get, uh, buku points for fifty percent even of that. And then the weight restrictions, it would, uh, put it pretty high in the points according to our calculations. So, therefore, uh, Brookings County could take advantage of, of the five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars remaining in our balance of the three-year, four-million-dollar, um, grant award ceiling. So, I think, I think it'd be, uh, good, and I, I've visited with LeAnn a little bit on it, and I, I think I'll be calling you each on an individual basis, just to see if you had any more particular questions on that. But I think it makes sense. It's, it's just a good move on our part, and it won't change anything else, uh, for what we've scheduled or are planning on doing. It, it'll just be a, a positive if it comes, uh, becomes a reality. Then, we also have part of our crew still working in Moody County, finishing up the chip sealing. Uh, the other part of the crew is installing culverts and patching roads, getting ready for our chip seal, which will probably be the first week in September. Uh, then, the last part of the crew is, uh, starting today. We're gonna work with Midstates Reclamation, who's working on our bridge on six, and we're gonna do a full-depth grinding of the road up by the bridge on three that we're gonna be replacing. Holloway will be replacing. It's always been kind of a roller coaster up there, and it's always been a problem with water saturating the base of the road, and we're going to full-depth grind it, uh, put down some fabric for three to five hundred feet, and then lay the millings back in and, and pack it, so it'll be a real good base. And then, when we get done with the structure and both paves, they'll pave, pave from, uh, where we started to across the box and then to the end. So, I think it'll be kind of an interesting, uh, project, because it should, uh, help that area considerably. Um, and then, last, I guess, would be to thank Misty for use of her guy, a couple of guys, in these times when we've had so many projects going, that they've come in handy, uh, to do running trucks out to these smaller projects, um, because I still haven't figured out a way to get one of our guys to be able to drive two trucks at one time, but we're, we're working on it. We'll, we'll get it pretty soon. And, uh, other than the above-listed projects, it's been pretty much business and maintenance as usual. We had the bid opening yesterday. We, uh, went up to install locks and whatever, so it, it keeps it, uh, interesting and fun, but sometimes even too much fun is, a lot at times. But that's it, unless you have some questions.
Yeah.
I was just curious, uh, on the small structures, and we're going to be getting a report from Banner, right, by November first? Do I remember that correctly? Have they already started those inspections? Do they notify you when they're going to do those?
Yes, yep. And they probably won't start till about the first of September, preferably with those, uh, they like to have the water levels down, so they can check for scouring and stuff. But yeah, they'll let me know, and, and then also, when they get done, they'll, uh, give us the whole finished report.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Jeff is running a little bit late due to construction. Didn't realize there was so much construction between here and there, so he'll be here shortly.
Okay. Move on, regular business. Uh, first reading, ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero three, and ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance number one nine eight six dash zero two of Brookings County, South Dakota, for increasing the wheel tax rate for vehicles over six thousand pounds.
Move approval. Second?
And a motion in second?
This is just first reading.
Oh, okay.
It's just, we'll be read into the minutes, and then the second reading will be at the next meeting. Second reading and the public hearing will be at the next meeting.
Okay.
Let's draw that motion.
And a read, uh, second reading and public hearing will be held on August twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, at nine forty-five AM. Letter B, action to approve resolution number seventeen dash three-two, a plat of track one of Hatch Edition in the northeast quarter of Section eleven, township one-eleven north, range fifty-one west of the fifth primoridium, Brookings County, South Dakota.
I'm moved. Second?
And a motion in second? Discussion, Bob?
We heard this at the August zoning meeting, and it was approved unanimously with the recommendation of Senate to this board for approval.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Yes.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action approve resolution number seventeen dash three-three, a plat of block one, Dieter Edition being located the north half of the northwest quarter of Section twelve, township one-eleven north, range fifty west of the fifth primoridium, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second?
And a motion in second?
Once again, we heard this one at the August planning meeting, and it was sent to this board with a unanimous recommendation of approval.
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
I'm staying.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action approve resolution number seventeen dash three-four, plat of lot eleven in block one in Paradise Point Edition and Government Lot Two, Section twenty-two, township one-twelve north, range forty-seven west of the fifth primoridium, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second?
And a motion in second?
We heard this at the August planning meeting, and the board voted unanimously to Senate to County Commission with the recommendation of approval.
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Letter E, action approve agreement number seventeen dash five-six, a renewal of the joint powers agreement with the Minnehaha County Jail, County Juvenile Detention Center for providing a secure detention facility for youth.
Move approval.
Second?
And a motion in second? Uh, any discussion here?
I have a couple of concerns. I'm not necessarily opposed to the, the motion, but when we don't have our contract price, that, that concerns me.
Mm-hmm.
And then, secondly, we're tying ourselves in for five years, when we're hoping some of these issues might be dealt with, with our, our expansion project. And I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we might be jumping the gun on it.
Why do they need this agreement when November's the actual contract?
You can see, uh, Ms. Gravitt's cover letter, you know, this was for to build that non-secure facility, and we'd entered into a two-year agreement, and that expired, and that, this extends that agreement, um...
For five years?
For five years.
Can, can we change it to one, or?
Well, I mean, we could probably do another, at least two, I would guess, if, you know, with the discussion of, of the sheriff, about three to four years before we would have, you know, an expansion of there, we, you know, keep that agreement for at least a couple of years. But do we know if the rates are gon', I mean, didn't we just sign this with the rates just recently?
Last year.
Last year?
Yeah, November. She anticipates it'll be like No- November when we get the new rates, and that's a different contract.
I'm wondering if we could table this matter. Commissioner Miller's been going to the meeting. She's on that advisory committee, and maybe she could report back to us at the next meeting, what's going on, why we got this now when we don't have the price, the contact, contract price yet. Maybe there's something going on there, applying for a grant or whatever. I just don't know why we're doing it in two separate pieces.
To me, this looks like this is just commitment towards the new expansion, and then November is the actual contract for the housing of juveniles.
So, it's two separate agreements, basically.
Mm-hmm.
This one doesn't hold us to any contract price other than what you negotiated back in November anyway? Okay, I can see the difference there. The question then with Commissioner Pierce is a five years instead of two, which is a change.
Right.
I don't know that there's anything in this. There's a lot of where is's in there, but, uh, that I saw that there was anything in particular that would cause us concern if it took us five years, if it took us two years to, to do an expansion. So, I, I don't see anything in there other than we agreed to participate, so. Sheriff? With this, who are the juveniles that are going to this facility or have a bed for us? Do you anticipate that these would be juveniles that we could keep? You know, we go through expansion or new jail, that we'd be able to keep them, or is this an agreement for juveniles that there's, we don't, we wouldn't have the facility to keep them anyway?
Yeah, I think we would have to, because whatever we do at ours is gonna be short-term, and so, we're gonna have to have Sioux Falls for anything longer, 'cause, you know, my facility, the way we planned it is just, you know, able to keep them maybe two nights to get them to corridor overnight, so we're not looking, you know, to house them, you know, for a sentence of any type, 'cause then that takes a whole different-
Well, if I may, Marty, most of the juveniles that are housed are either predispositioned with something sort of like a rape or something where they can't be in the home, or, um, adults, juveniles tried as adults who are not of age to be held in the jail. Um, what I think Marty is saying is it would be the emergency detention hearings that he could hold the juvenile for, instead of bringing them to Sioux Falls and back, but this would be your long-term detention.
So, even if we have an expansion in four to five years, we're still gonna need another agreement, I guess, so, okay. So, I think it makes sense, if they, if they want five years, that it's not gonna...
And-
'Cause the rea- originally, it was a twenty-year project, and then they only went two years because they were looking at building, and things were gonna cost, and things were gonna change, and now that building is done, so they wanna get a little longer term rather than two years, but...
And, and my concern is, and, and maybe, um, Terry has a better handle on this, is that when they look at the contract rate after we sign this agreement, they're going to be averaging that over five years, and hopefully, if we get ourselves our, our overnight stay, our short-term stays are going to be fewer, and so, our contract price should be less. But we don't know any of that now, and we're tying ourselves in for five years. That, that was my concern.
Do they, remember, did we lock the price in for those two years? 'Cause we didn't lock the price in for twenty. Don't they come and change it?
They change it almost annually.
They change it anyway.
Annually, so.
It's an annual renewal anyway.
They look at the number of beds that each county takes, and they do a per, um, DM for each county. So, I mean, what we're looking at in November because of what we had for, I think we had four juveniles held as a, for adults. It might be higher, and then the next year, but I don't think they lock us in for two years. It's an annual per DM.
So, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think we're gonna, even if we sign five or one, they're gonna come back and change if they need to change. Yeah. So...
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I see, uh, uh, two thousand sixteen closing audit report, Jeff Schaefer from Legislative Audit. Would you?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, first of all, I apologize for being a little late this morning. Uh, wasn't expecting some of the things I ran into. But, uh, anyway, at this point in time, uh, the fiscal, uh, audit for FY sixteen has been completed and reviewed and is in its final form. If you have any questions or concerns, uh, that you'd like to ask about the audit, uh, please feel free. Uh, yeah, this is, at this point in time, I'd like to turn your attention to the management letter that was supplied to, uh, each one of you, and, uh, mostly, the, the items that I'd like to discuss would be noted, rotated on the second page and towards the bottom. And there were no any, no big discrepancies, there are no big material items, or just a couple immaterial items that I'd like to make mention of. Uh, there was one instance noted where expenditures exceeded appropriations, uh, in violation of seven twenty-one twenty. Uh, it was for transfers out. There wasn't sufficient budget there, and that was for two hundred fifty thousand. And secondly, is, uh, we just said noted that the original law enforcement contract established in two thousand nine, um, said the contract will automatically renew unless terminated. And there were several rate increases in there that we didn't find an addendum to that, that supported that, those increases and stuff. And we would like to, if you could maybe have an addendum, if you don't do a new contract, just have an addendum to it, to those increases. But other than that, uh, things went very well. Um, we didn't have a, there were some other immaterial items that we discussed with the appropriate personnel, but nothing of any major consequence. So there's a lot, uh, we probably thought there's gonna be a lot more to it than there was, there's, there's not, so. You have any questions that might have?
Any questions? Okay. I guess no questions good.
What's that?
I guess no questions is good.
No questions are good. So thank you to everyone and, uh, thank you, Vicki.
And, um, I want to thank Legislative Audit, they've been great, everyone that comes. We've had up to five different auditors at a time and they're all, all good. We really appreciate your help and appreciate all of the work of all the staff in my office. They work diligently to get a good audit, so I appreciate all their help as well.
Like, like to commend your staff also for their work, so.
Thanks.
Going back to letter F, uh, Action Approved Agreement Number Seventeen dash five-seven. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Brookings Dual Rural Water.
Move Approval.
Second.
And a motion to second? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G, Action Approved Agreement Number Seventeen dash five-eight. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
I'm moved.
Second.
Get a motion to the second, uh, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, Action Approved Agreement Number Seventeen dash five-nine. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move Approval. Second.
And motion to second? Call the roll?
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, Action Approved Agreement Number Seventeen dash six-zero. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move Approval. Second.
And motion to second? Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter J, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Charter Establishing the Brookings County and City Joint Jurisdiction Committee.
We had discussed this at the last meeting some and, uh, I'd reached out to Todd Case with First District and they are more than happy to help be the facilitator of this meeting. I actually just received an email from him this morning, kind of a little more in-depth of kind of what he would like to see in detail as if this gets approved, to have like a scoping meeting initially with, um, just a few of the members to kind of get a direction on where to go. Um, they would help with the agendas that ultimately I believe he thought would maybe be sent out by our planning and zoning, uh, our department. Um, they are more than willing to help and help facilitate those meetings, moving them forward. And then, um, there was also a question on, I think, length of time to notice the meetings and I think I'd had in there five business days and I, I, I put that up to ten business days to, to notice these meetings since they would be, uh, just so many different players involved that would take some time to get everybody scheduled for a meeting, so. I think those were kind of the last two questions that we had from last week unless anything else came up since then that you would like to discuss.
Any discussion or, I guess, uh, in favor of it, uh, is, do they need appointees today or if approved?
You could do it today if, if you wanted to wait on that, you could, uh, if you wanted to wait to make that appointment until, once the county approves this, then it would go to the city council for their approval as well. And we've been working in, in, in connection with Mayor Corbett on this as well, so. He knows it's coming.
I guess I'd look for a motion to enter into a committee with the city on a.
I'm moved.
Second. And I, and I hate to say this, I have one change that we should make in our agreement. The, the city, um, it says one representative from the Brookings City Planning and Zoning Committee, it should be, uh, the Brookings City Planning Commission, that, that they're not called Planning and Zoning. It's not, yeah.
We leave it pretty open on some of the appointments that says one representative from the Brookings Municipal Utilities, does that need to be a board member or it could be staff or it could be, you know, does it matter? Do we need to be that specific or leave it pretty open, let them? You could say chosen, you know, they could choose who they want to, I guess. If you want to get, that you want the, the head of BMU or do you want, you know, the one representative to be chosen by the director or something like that, representative? I guess we leave it open, they can decide. Yeah. When we look at two township representatives, would we be advertising for those positions and who would select the two? Would it be our chairman?
That's a good question.
We have quite a few townships and it says two township representatives, I just, you know, there's gotta be an application process, I would assume, or a public notice of the, the. Same way with the at-large. Same way with the at-large and then who picks the two at-larges, the, uh, it could be the committee itself with the appointed representatives, make those determinations as far as the township and the, uh, at-large members.
And even the township representatives, they probably should be within the three-mile joint jurisdiction. I mean, you don't want somebody from Reston Township, I mean.
But I think it was the intent that the committee picked those remaining at-large members, the township ones, the at-large ones, and maybe we need to clarify that in there.
We could just add the same verbiage after the township representatives to be selected by the committee that we do after the at-large members.
And I think we can make sure that if we get an application for
Yeah.
somebody that's outside that, that's probably not a person we should choose. We won't have the.
Okay.
I'm not sure that you want to limit it to somebody in the joint jurisdictional area. There may be people in townships just outside the joint jurisdictional area that want to weigh in, so to speak.
Yeah, that's true too.
Once you've established that and it's a moving target over the years, uh, somebody who's, I, I don't think you'd want to restrict it to the three-mile area for the applications. The committee could decide what they want to do, obviously, at the end, but I don't think you want to restrict it in the application process because there may be some very interested individuals outside that three-mile area that have some input in that. And this doesn't restrict it now, so I'm, I'm just saying, I just want to make it clear that we don't put it out there to the public, you have to be in a three-mile area to apply for the township one. I think it should be, if you're in Brookings County, you want to apply, you have a concern in the three-mile area, you should be allowed to apply.
And I think those are some of the details, like what the application should look like if, like Todd with First District had suggested that scoping meeting as we get some of the initial, um, city council and county commission and staff, county and city staff on board have that initial meeting and start looking at some of those things to, to get the rest of the committee members selected.
Yeah, they've established their quorum as seven members of the, what do we got, eleven?
Thirteen.
Two, four, six, eight. Thirteen. So they'll be able to take action prior to the appointment of those committees. Just my concern to make sure that they were able to do those actions and they should be with seven.
Have motion?
We had one.
Motion to second? Any other, Leanne? No, call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, as, as relates to the issue of whether or not we should go ahead and appoint now, I, I think that would be beneficial because if we went ahead and made that decision, then if the city does pass this, then we could get things started without waiting another month or whatever to, to get moving. And I would say that I'd like to volunteer to serve on this committee if, if you choose to appoint me to do that.
Well, I, I think it'd be pertinent that the lays onto the zoning board be one of those persons. And if it would change it in our appointments, that person should move onto the committee also. I don't, not sure Stephanie's interested or not, that's the only reason that would, I would wait.
I, I would have an interest and the only thing I guess I would be concerned about is we, we ended up with two representatives possibly from the planning and zoning area.
You'd get, you could end up with three commissioners the way it reads there also.
The way this is written, you could end up with three of us, which would not probably be a great idea, so. I, you know, give it some thought, uh, doesn't need to be done today. I'd be interested also.
You make this tough on me then.
Yeah, we're gonna make it really tough on you.
I, I'll volunteer to.
Bob, you're already on there.
It looks like you're there already, Bob. I could say, or his, or his representative, I suppose, if you want to move it on to somebody else.
I guess I'd like to wait till everybody's here. So I'll point on the twenty-second to, to this board then.
Yeah, that allows you to wait until the city passes it in case they make any changes that we'd have to address. They may not pass it, I think they will.
Yeah. Okay, we have a scheduled nine-thirty, I believe. Discussion Possible Action on Big Sioux River Concerns Near County Road Twelve, Midary Township resident Londa Hexum.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for listening to me. It's almost depressing listening to your meetings because everybody needs something. And, um, I just, I, I would just want to do a brief recap. I know the last time I was here, I gave you a whole bunch of maps of the section and the township and, uh, Google and an airplane, um, of the, the area that we questioned. And like I said before, this isn't just our problem, I think it's all of our problem. And the more people that we can get involved in the discussion perhaps, the easier it is to find something that we can all live with. I know it involves meandering waters. I know that the Army Corps of Engineers has to be involved. I know that, um, NRCS has to be involved. And after speaking with the, um, the representative at the NRCS that I was directed to at the state office in Huron, um, he said they're more than willing to come to the specific area or to a meeting and be involved in that discussion. And they're open to, to compromise and negotiation of the one-hundred-year WRP contract, which is reassuring in a sense. We have their attention and they're willing to participate. The Army Corps of Engineers is a delicate organization that I, I know we have a two-week application process once we start. And the last time we went through this, six years ago, I don't think our application was detailed enough about specifically what we needed them to consider. And so when the individual from the corps came, it was simply, no, you can't do that. And, and he left. Within twenty minutes, he was gone. Um, it wasn't dealing with the problem at hand and we appreciate you considering what our options might be. And I know, Leanne, you've been out there and, have you been out there yet, Larry?
I didn't make it, I was going this weekend, I didn't.
Anyone that would like, I mean, our township supervisors are more than willing to give you a tour as well as anyone here representing the landowners. Um, so what I did, based on our discussion last meeting, um, I tried to construct a letter to our national and state representatives that at least represents our perspective. I can't speak for all of y'all, but I kind of tried to consider, I mean, getting individuals' opinions as well as to organizations of government entities' opinions in this letter, but I'd like to give you a copy to review. Um, and if, let me just. The last time we made application to the corps, um, for their help in this area, um, I know, Bob, I don't know if you remember, but you had also sent a letter of, of support for them addressing the issue. We had two quotes from Civil Design, um, that ranged from seventy to eighty thousand to repair the dike area because it's kind of a two-fold process. We look at repairing the dike to restore the channel to its original space or we look at changing where the, the river goes. And the last time that the corps was here, he stated, well, that's just the Big Sioux River and you just have to live with it. Well, it, it's really affecting the roads and bridges tremendously and, uh, so how do we deal with this more proactively is, is the question we keep asking. And there are a couple gentlemen here that can, um, speak on their own behalf in the way that it's directly impacting them. Cause I think I kind of, I, I think I kind of said my piece. It's not just a, a once in a while occasional occurrence of flooding. This is a, a new place for the river and if that's going to be, then we don't have the infrastructure set up to handle that water. And we're paying property tax on what is now cattails and, and riverbank. And so I think there has to be some sort of discussion, negotiation regarding that.
Okay, would you, um, you want to invite others from your group to speak or?
Deverne, would you like to say a few words? Or Tom? These gentlemen also own directly and I think it's important that, that we get there. Thank you.
Deverne Brooklyn? Um, I'm just gonna repeat what everybody else said, I guess we've brought this to the township's attention, the county's attention, um, five, ten years ago, nothing got done naturally. And we're here again trying to get something done and it is a meandering river, but, um, it does back up water on several thousands of acres and it's getting to be a financial problem. Um, you know, either we have to do something or, or allow us to do something or something here. It's just, uh, the lack of action's really getting to be a problem. Everybody's known about it for years, so, uh, we need to get something rolling here. It's hard to make taxes on cattails, so.
All right.
I don't know what legally we can do to, to get it going or what we can legally do to lower all the taxes because it's, again, it is quite a few thousand acres that need to be adjusted here. So, um, who do we go to and what do we do?
Okay. I guess intentions today, Londa, is it to I guess intentions today, Londa, is it to establish a meeting, or?
I think that would be helpful, perhaps. I guess what we're really asking is if you could just.
Could you come back for?
If we can get your help in getting behind this to make a larger impact and make sure that we have our ducks in a row and our Ts crossed, that would be most helpful for us. I think that's what we're really asking. And if this is something that you could participate in on that level, if we could get a meeting where you're involved, we're involved, the NRCS, and, and go from there, Mr. Hubbard as well. I know he's frustrated because we keep asking for permission and we're not getting anywhere. And so I think it would be best if, if perhaps that's the best way to handle it, most efficient way, I'm not sure. We're trying not to tax you, but.
Is, is it worth, you know, you had, the last meeting with everybody was two thousand and ten, correct? Is it worth calling another meeting to see if anything has changed? With the Corps, NRCS, everybody again? Because what I mean by change is maybe personnel sometimes change.
Certainly.
You know, and, and maybe another person looks at it differently. I mean, and, and I, we would certainly be willing to meet at that meeting with all involved and, and let them know what our concerns are and stuff, too.
I think that would be helpful.
Before we send this to, I mean, I don't want, I feel like I don't wanna go over their head without giving them a chance to say no again, I guess, would be the thing. If we're gonna send this to our representatives, senators, it seems like we're trying to go over the Corps off of a no from two thousand and ten. And I wonder if, if they're gonna keep their stance on a no, then we maybe need to send a letter. So is it something we should maybe organize a meeting with NRCS, Mr. Hubbard, Corps again, one more time and see if we can get that same, I mean, we want a different answer, obviously. See if we can get a different answer, but if it's the same one, you know, then we go from there.
I'm not sure the Corps is going to be willing to come to a table to just talk. That we need to make application to talk to them, I think. But we can certainly try that. I, 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 I mean, I think we're open to suggestions and ideas.
Just a second. Bob?
Yeah, we need to bring Jay Gilwardson from East Dakota Water Development District into it. He can really help us.
He was not able to come. Yeah, I reached out to Jay and he was not able to come today. He had a commitment somewhere else this morning.
We had talked to Jay last, before the last meeting, and he's aware and, and was aware at, at the prior and was at the prior meeting as well. And I think he would be willing to participate, certainly.
Yeah, we'd, we'd wanna use him to help, because he, he knows more of the players in the water field than the county does. Thank you.
So, I mean, do we wanna go, do you have to make application, you're saying, for two weeks to apply for them to come and look at it? Is that kinda what we did last time?
Request an application, then it's a two-week period, and that's gotta be back to them.
We can contact the Corps without any application and, as a county entity, as a government entity. Let me do some checking and see if we can.
Yeah, we've had.
We shouldn't have to fill out an application for the Corps to talk to us, they're a federal agency. If NRCS is willing to talk to us, the Corps should be willing to talk to us.
Can you take the lead on that for us?
Yeah, I, I've got no problem with it.
Rich, Richard, who does the hydrology when we do a bridge project? The state or? Okay, I don't know if it's beneficial, if we're doing the preliminary on that bridge on twelve, if that person would also be invited to the meeting.
When, when does that report get done?
Well, I'm not, are they working on that hydrology study now?
That would be helpful.
And if Bob will help, we could set up a meeting like we had before. We'd be willing to sit in.
Absolutely.
And we'll go from there.
I'll just need some emails, Ms. Hexum, if you don't mind, so I can contact you once, once we. The, the main player is gonna be the Corps, obviously. We want them in, on the table. If we can get the Corps out here just for a courtesy visit, then we'll, that's the route we wanna go first before. And then maybe they'll help us, tell us what they want in the application, so it's done, done proper. Not that it wasn't done proper the first time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Letter K. Discussion possible act. Whoop, whoop, sorry.
I'm, I'm affected too by this issue that we were just talking about.
Can you state your name, please?
My name's Tom Stenberg.
Okay.
And I live right on that Street two seventeen. That mile east of me is the one that we're talking about, you know, that, that's holding up a lot of the water in them three culverts. And one thing, I think, I, I was at a meeting this spring. And Laura Edwards, she's the climatologist for the state. And so she was giving her predictions, and I don't think climate change is anything to be argued about anymore. It's happening. When I was, when I was young and grew up in this area, we just assumed that July and August, November, October would be dry and everything. That was, but she said, that's not quite the way it's gonna be. She said that climate change, there's winners and losers. One thing, we have a, a longer growing season now. The frost date now, instead of being the third week in September, is, typical frost date now is October fifth, which is good news. Longer growing time for the, for the crops. But she said that there's another trend that's gonna, that's starting to emerge, and she had the statistics. She said that we can expect more precipitation, September, October, November. Now, the implication is, for a grain farmer, which I'm not, but for a grain farmer, trying to get crops to town is gonna be more and more of an issue, the wetter it is. And that road to the east of me, everybody knows that if there's much of a precipitation, you don't go the east road. I'm not a grain farmer, but it has even impacted me. I raise livestock. I had a semi come to pick up a load of fat cattle. And he didn't dare go north, because he couldn't go on that river bridge. He said, I can't even go across there with an empty truck. And he couldn't make the left turn to go west because of that box culvert. So the only way he, he got to figuring it out, the only way he could do it is come out of my driveway heading north and back about an eighth of a mile to the south. He is a good truck driver. He knew what he was doing. But it's, it's becoming more obvious that it's gonna affect a lot more than just grain farmers. So I just thought maybe, I don't think we can kind of expect, the way Laura Edwards talked, I don't think we can expect, oh, well, it'll get dry and, and the problem will go away. It didn't sound that way. She said that trend is more of a wet fall, long-term. So just leave that happy thought, so.
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. Anybody else looking forward? Okay, moving on to letter K. Discussion possible action to approve spending HAVA Help American Vote Act funds for the purchase of ten express vote voting machines.
We need action to approve using the HAVA funds. We have it in our budget for next year, but with the state, it may end up having to be spent this year because they want to have these purchased, because this, the state is going to purchase three of them for our county if we go on with it this year. So it would be a big savings, and we budgeted forty-two thousand next year. And this would be about thirty-four thousand, might not be quite that much. And it would be taken directly out of our HAVA funds, so we wouldn't have a budget impact with the county money.
Any questions, Ricky?
I would move approval.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter L. Discussion possible action to authorize the finance office to contract with B Pro for the two thousand and eighteen election year for E poll software and support.
Second.
And motion and a second, background?
With this, we, especially Kristen, has done a lot of research. We've had Sean involved. We've had two of the vendors come to Brookings County. Kristen went out to peer and viewed B Pro. And this, B Pro is the company that wrote Total Vote that the counties across the state have been using. Well, they all have to use them. They wrote the software program for our Total Vote system. So they would be a good fit, and also it would be the best budget-wise, because we could use our old E poll books and they would apply their software. And we budgeted forty-nine thousand next year for the renting of E poll books. So we wouldn't have to do that, but we would have to have about twenty-eight thousand four hundred for the software and the support for both the primary and general elections. And I know one of our concerns has been in the past is if we have a reputable company. And I think I gave you the website that you could go on and check. They are doing business in many different counties and many different states. So they are something that, it isn't a one-man show, that they would have the support that we needed. I don't know if there's any other questions for Kristen. She has done most of the research on this.
I just have a question, because I get this question every now and then from a citizen. Not specifically related to this, but about whether or not our election results can be tampered with. Is there, what type of security considerations are there? How is all of that being handled?
As far as our results go, nothing is tied to the internet. Our, our counting machine never gets hooked into the internet, so onsite is as far as that goes. The election results then do get entered by hand off of the results that come off of that machine into the state computer. But none of that information is ever tied to the internet.
And none of that's tied to the B Pro system?
Nope, not the election results, no. Kind of on a little side note, though, I did talk to B Pro about coming and talking about their security measures and things like that. If we do approve to go with them, and he'd be more than happy to come and, and talk to you guys about that.
Thank you.
No other questions? Call roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter M. Action to direct the finance office to publish a notice of public hearing for a supplemental budget resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter N. Discussion on Department Head Annual Review Process.
Our strategic plan says that this will be done by the end of October. And it seems like we've always kind of gotten a later start, so that we kind of push that out, we end up pushing that out a little bit, which doesn't, ultimately doesn't affect us, as long as we have it done before. Typically, by the end of November is really kind of a, a, a good rule of thumb for us, just so we can get all of the paperwork processed through. But in the past, what we've done the last couple of years is have the appointed department heads fill out a self-evaluation. And then we share those with the board, and then each of you individually fill out an evaluation on each of the appointed department heads. And we, and then, and then Laura takes those, takes everyone's information and compiles it into a report. Do you want to change how we do that? I, I think we've been working on getting that a little more user-friendly, like, to be able to fill it out online. And we had some issues last year, so if we can, if that's the direction you wanna go, we'd work on, kind of working out the bugs and things that we had even last year with that. Or if there's a different process that you would like to implement? Any thoughts?
Any thoughts?
Wasn't involved last year, so I'll, I'll do whatever the rest of them wanna do.
I thought the process was okay. The form was impossibly difficult to work with. And if we're gonna fix that, that maybe will take care of the problem.
I do, I don't know. It just seems it's more complicated than it needs to be. And ask me, I mean, I, maybe I'm too simplistic. I just wanna sit down and go over what they've done. If we've had some issues, if we've got complaints, I just wanna be able to talk to them and see how things are going. And if they've got some issues that we need to address, or just want that communication between us and our department heads. And obviously, it's a review, so we wanna keep track of that. But, and I know you need to have something in, in writing and everything like that, which is a summary. But again, I just, it seems to get too discombobulated, I guess. I don't know. I just wanna sit down and talk to them.
Some of it repeats itself. But I'm sure there's areas that we're supposed to evaluate. You know, there's different parts of the evaluation that we go through.
I suppose we gotta be consistent, because right now, like I said, our department heads are doing great. You know, there's probably, you know, things we can work on, but, you know, we're not sitting there gonna look and not firing anybody or anything like that, or getting rid of anybody. So it's like, but that could become a time where somebody, you know, that is an issue. And I suppose we have to be consistent with that, but, I don't know. I guess, I know Laura, Laura needs to be involved in that type of situation as far as HR and, and everything. I don't know. I just, I'd like to simplify it somehow.
Maybe she, I mean, we looked at the examples over a year ago, didn't we, before we started last year's evaluation?
I don't know. I hate to complain without an option to fix it. You know? I don't know.
Is it kinda hard to recommend when you're gonna be evaluated?
Kind of, but, yeah, I know Commissioner Weiseth was big on the form and having that. You know, that was, he was, but he comes from an industry where he gave reviews quite often, so. It's kinda, that's the direction we went. I personally like the self-evaluations that each department head does, and then that we disseminate out to you. And then maybe it's just a process of you sitting down and reading each of those and, and jotting down some comments and, you know, getting those to Laura, and she can compile them and bring them in and get away from a form, per se.
A form, a score, it's.
I think we need a form myself. I, I, I do, and I, I'm not necessarily hung up on having that particular form. But I, I do think there needs to be a structure to the evaluation process. The evaluation process is not just for us, it's for the department heads also, and hopefully, everybody takes something away. And, and hopefully, when people are filling that out, they're thinking, well, last year I said I wanted to do this, and did I get that accomplished or not, you know, and addressing some of those things. And, and part of it is that self-evaluation. And, and part of it is that self evaluation portion of it. I, I think we need to have a form. I, I don't think we can just sit and visit. I, I think we have to have a form. But if, if you want to look for a different format, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't, would it help to ask like the city or what they do for their department heads or chat and see what? Some options?
Or maybe it would be beneficial to have a form that, you know, mirrors, I think, I think the department head evaluation sort of mirrored the, what you filled out as well. But I think it's, it's the effort that everybody puts into it as well. So. I can check to see if the city has, does something, I don't know.
We don't need to set a date yet? When you would like?
If you would like to get them done by the end of, you know, our strategic plan says by the end of October. So if you want to set a time to have those before the end of October, if you want it as part of a commission meeting day, you'd be looking at the seventeenth of October. Have the commission meeting that morning and then department head reviews in the afternoon. Or if you'd like to set a separate day and start in the morning.
What's, what's better for our department heads? Just a notice?
I think if you give them, if you let them know now, they can get it on their calendar.
He's saying, would it work better for him to have it same day as a commission meeting? I mean.
Oh, I don't.
Doesn't matter. Be better for me.
Yeah. I'd prefer it too, then, then we get it, we can schedule it.
You got one day to meet. Set it up for the seventeenth. And if you're going to do a self evaluation, when would the days be? I think that was some of the confusion last year. We didn't get the self evaluations, only about day or so before, wasn't it? I can't remember, something was with the self evaluations that.
We, what happens is when we get those self evaluations and then we have to get those out to you and then you do your.
Yep.
Things, we have to really have those done fairly soon.
Didn't we, we got the self evaluations and then all of us filled out our own evaluation?
Yes.
Then it had to be compiled into one evaluation.
Yes. It was, it was a process.
Right, right. And that's what took for a long time and it's not easy to.
And if we give you five weeks or five days, you will still wait till the last day to get them done.
It's Bartley's fault.
Yes.
Kropman, Commissioner Kropman. I'm looking at you.
And me.
Yep.
So I, I guess you can drag out the process as long as you want. But like I said, if, if you, if I give you a week or if I give you, if we give everybody department heads a week or five weeks, we'll still probably get most of them on the, the day that they're due, so.
I mean, I just throw this out there. I like self evaluations. They can, the department heads can look at what they did last year, how it went, and then they can maybe do an update and do the evaluations. But do, we can look at them and maybe we can take some notes and discuss when we have the meeting and have some questions with them and that kind of thing. And then who's ever taking those notes can compile a few things and then put together a review rather than taking all five of ours, put it into one and trying to summarize that. Because you looked at that review with five other, there's five other opinions and they were all kind of under there, it just didn't go in a direction. You know, I mean, it was just kind of, the review was, they're doing a good job, needs to work on this, doing a good job. And it was, it was like, okay, so what do we really need to work on here? Is there a problem? And maybe that, that could be brought out in our discussion that everything's going good except for this, need to work on this. And it's just one review from a consensus of all of us during that discussion. But rather than taking all five, trying to put them together and taking that process.
The, the, the problem with that, the, the reason you do the ranking and you do it across five people, this is hypothetical and has nothing to do with anybody that we have on staff. But let's say that I, as a commissioner, have a definite dislike for one person, okay? And so I rank them at the very bottom, okay? And I say bad things about them, okay? The reason we do it across the board is because then that's more fair to the department head. Because if, if everybody else, if we're doing a one to ten scale and everybody else gives them a ten and I give them a one, that'll balance out. And, and that's more fair to the department head. Doing, that's more difficult to have a measurable evaluation using the format that you're suggesting.
I understand.
That's, that's just, I think that's the reason we use the scale thing. And that was a hypothetical.
Yes, I'm. Due to this, so the process, when we all get together and review, we have each department come, head come in and we give them the results of the review. And that's an executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, obviously it should be. So all of us review all the department heads initially?
Yes.
Not just the ones we're assigned to?
Correct.
Let me stop you there, not all the department heads?
The appointed department heads.
Appointed.
Yes.
Okay. We, we all do those appointed department head reviews. That's collated, then we have that general discussion with each of them individually?
Yes.
And then there's a final report after that or we're done at that point?
You're basically done at that point. There's a form then that the chair signs as, after the review is complete. And then all that information goes into personnel files.
Trying to get a handle on the processor.
And the form we're using is not perfect. It could use some, maybe adjustment.
Yeah.
When that form, I think maybe, did we start using that form three years ago or, or was that being used before I came on the commission?
No, that's just been used in the last year or two is probably about it.
We've used that form every time that I've done it.
Okay.
Seems to me there are a lot of counties in South Dakota, so somebody else might have a better form, evaluation form. I don't know when that one was selected, if anybody talked to our state organization to see if they had a format or we could look for a different form.
I could probably reach out to some of the other counties. I don't know if our association would, but. But otherwise you like that process though of having the self evaluation and then each fill out, if we can find a better form to fill out for each department head? Except for Commissioner Kropman.
He can't read.
Okay, well, I'll do some, I'll look for some additional forms and maybe send some out and get opinions. Okay, but October seventeenth is going to be our, our day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Following commission.
So we want to go, set it a time at one o'clock then and then start the schedule?
Yeah, we'd start at one o'clock. Do every, I can't remember what we typically do, I think half an hour maybe.
And I guess I'd like to add at, at the end of the scheduled ones, if there's elected department head that would like to come in and talk to the commission about anything, they would be invited, so.
I'll extend that invitation out to the elected department heads as well if they would like to come in. There wouldn't be a formal evaluation for them, but just if they would like to come in and have a discussion with you.
Yeah, if they have concerns or something they want to talk about, so.
Yep.
All right. Number nine, commission department director report.
My report was included in the packet. The eight county meeting is coming up on August sixteenth. I had that agenda in the packet. And I believe Commissioners Miller and Jensen and then Vicky and Bev and myself will, is who I RSVP'd for, for that. That's up in Dual County, up in Clear Lake. The conservation district's a little different, an update since my staff report was even written. But there, it is going to be the twenty-third, that's a Wednesday, I believe, starting at nine thirty, Wednesday, the twenty-third, at nine thirty. And we're going to meet at their district building. And that's north on Medary, two miles north of the bypass and then a quarter, a half a mile west.
Will you say that one more time?
Um, north on Medary, two miles from the bypass and then a half mile west. And that tour will start at nine thirty and I believe there's a lunch, be back there and have lunch at noon for those that can, can attend that. Fall convention is coming up in Rapid City, September eighteenth and nineteenth. And I, there was a kind of a tentative agenda in your packet as well. I do have rooms reserved for Sunday, Monday and Tuesday nights in Rapid City. I do need, the September first is our deadline to get registered at a reduced rate. So I would like to get our registration in. So I, I would like to know if you plan to go and then how many nights you would like a room for. It does start at, the first caucus meetings are at nine AM on that Monday, the eighteenth, which is a little bit different. Usually those are held after kind of the last thing of the day. And now those are going to be held first thing that morning on Monday. So nine AM, West River time, so even later than that. So I would assume if you're planning on going out and want to attend that, then the next thing, the keynote is at ten fifteen, so still pretty early in the morning, so.
And it ends Tuesday at?
It ends, it doesn't wrap up until four PM on Tuesday. Okay.
I'm planning on going.
And are, and are you three nights?
Right now.
Okay.
The same.
Okay. And I know it's, and I have you down for two nights, right? You're going to.
I'll come home Tuesday.
Tuesday? And I know Stephanie's going, but I'm, and I'm sure she's, I think she's staying three nights too, but, okay, there's a couple other people I need to get ahold of, but that's helpful, okay?
Are the intentions, are we taking commissioner vehicle or we?
I'm going to drive out by myself.
Good.
We can kind of coordinate that as it gets a little bit closer to, as far as taking the commission vehicle and who's going to take it and who's going when, so.
But I'd reserve it for, I'd be coming back Tuesday after.
Okay. I think you may have all individually received an invitation to the CapEx two thousand twenty Big Stone South Brookings County Transmission Line Project. That's Wednesday, August thirtieth at ten thirty. And then the event site is near White. I have an address listed there in my, my report, but I think maybe you've received those individually too. Tim Dwyer with the SDSU Foundation, you know, we've kind of been back and forth with them about our tax exempt bonding authority. And they do have some time. November first is really their, their need to know date because they need sixty days, which would put them at the end of the year, they need to know sixty days. One other option he did throw out is that our two thousand seventeen bonding authority is, would possibly be available if we defer our bond financing for the jail project until two thousand eighteen. Vicky was there? You had some conversations though with, with Tom Grimmon with Doherty about our bonding, right? And the, and the levy, the necessary levy.
Right. And we will have to get direction from you, how you want to proceed, if you want to put a levy on for the, for the eighteen, seventeen payable and eighteen taxes. And we should actually have that in the provisional budget, which is the fifth of September when it's approved. So we should discuss or get some direction on how you want to proceed with that. The bonds don't have to be actually purchased yet, but since we passed the resolution, we do have the authority to levy for next year. And we just need to know if that's the way you want to proceed or how you want us to proceed with putting it in the budget.
How much would one year's levy be? I mean, what would, how much would we have to go toward the project?
If we are going to go according to what Tom Grimmon had, that was five hundred and twenty-six thousand. But we can vary that somewhat. When I talked to him, he suggested going with five hundred thousand for an amount. And then if it was too much, the next year we would put the levy down. But at least we'd have money reserved for that project.
And what date did you say that we have to have that decision?
Provisional budget has to be approved September fifth, so we would have to know prior to that to get it in the budget document.
Not that I anticipate this happening, but I just want to know how it would work. If we did the levy this year, okay? And something happened and we didn't move forward with this project, what happens then?
If you, if you are going to use it at some time, we're fine because it's budgeted for that project. You cannot use it for any other project. The worst case scenario, if you never did the project, we'd have to, you know, give that money back to the taxpayers or apply it to, you know, the, the taxes. I mean, it would have to be something that is, it's just for that project. So if it, it doesn't go forward, we would have to give it back, basically.
And it would not make a difference if our project took four years to get done as opposed to two years?
I don't believe so in talking to Mr. Grimmon.
So it's kind of two separate issues, whether or not we're going to levy next year for the jail expansion project. If there's any possibility that you're going to sell the bonds next year and move forward with it at all, we need to have that levy in place.
Correct.
The bond, Tim Dwyer's request from SDSU Foundation just sort of falls in whether or not we do that yet this year or if we do it in two thousand eighteen. And if you are willing to give up our tax exempt bonding authority at all in either of those years.
I'm in favor of us doing the levy this year. That would give us five hundred thousand dollars less that we would need to bond, right? That we'd need to borrow if, if that's how we choose to proceed, but it would give us some options. I, I think we should move forward with levy, that would be, I don't know what the rest of you think, but.
I guess I'm in favor of continuing with the levy at the five hundred thousand range and the SDSU request, we can deal with that later once we take care of our project first, the jail expansion.
I agree.
So we are going to just wait, like I said, as November first is sort of his, his deadline that he needs to know by. So we are going to just wait, like I said, as November 1st is sort of his, his deadline that he needs to know by. And I don't know that we'll know anything, well, we should know some more by then, so. I don't, I guess the only reason I would see not to buy, to put the levy on is if there is any way that this, you're not going to do the project in some fashion, and I don't see that happening.
Well, that's what I mean, some fa, you just said some fashion. Marty brought up an issue earlier that some fashion we could, to go within the jail to make, accommodate your situation you're having right now. I mean, if that's some, you know, some fashion.
Yeah.
So, just so I'm understanding, we can go ahead and put the levy in for the budget to be approved for September 5th and have it an amount of about 500,000. Does that sound correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And then I will reach out to Mr. Dwyer again and explain that, you know, we're still, we don't have any confirmation yet on exactly what our plans are for our jail expansion project. Hopefully, we will in the next couple of months, and then we can, you know, if we know November 1st is his, his due date to hear from us, and so we should, we'll just keep, be cognizant of that. Okay. My report was an election notice for the SDPAA, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance Board of Directors, Wednesday, October 4th. They're having their annual membership meeting then in Sioux Falls, and then they also have that board of directors election, so that, that information is in my packet. I passed out today in front of you is a taxing authority notice from the city of Volga. They are looking at possibly creating another TIF district in town. And the map shows on that east side of town where there's continued development. So I handed that out. That's coming up, what is that? August 18th at noon over at the city council chambers in Volga. Is that, that hearing? And then our strategic plan says that we'll review that plan in August of each year for progress. I'll have that on the agenda next, for our next meeting in August. And then there's just some of the upcoming dates, and I think most of them I have already talked about, so, or they're coming up a ways out. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
How many TIFs does Volga have now? Do we know?
Do you?
Do you know, Vicky?
They have three right now.
They have three? And who monitors to make sure, and I, I, just asking for information's sake, I'm in favor of this TIF, but who monitors to make sure they're within their tax base limits on TIFs? Do we keep track of that? They keep track of that? The state keep track of it? How, how does that get done?
We get notification from the state. Everything that, the cities do have to be filed with the state, and then we get notification here, and it's done basically through equalization and then onto us. We get all the values and everything from equalization, and then we apply the levy.
Okay, so the state tracks if they're within their dollar limits on what they can have in it?
Yes, and then we have to send all of our information to the state, and then it has to be approved by the state.
Thank you.
Okay. Deputy State's attorneys report.
Well, we're, numbers may be down, but the types of crimes seem to be up. Also, just basically working on various documents for the different projects that we have going on through the commission, and that's about it.
Okay. Commissioner reports. Leanne?
On August 1st, we had county planning and zoning. We passed those three plats. It was a pretty quiet meeting, and we actually got done early. And August 3rd, I did meet with Terry and some city people to work on the contracts related to the OAC, and attended the 4H barbecue with the rest of you on August 3rd, and that would be my report.
Commissioner Barley?
July 26th, I attended the SDSU, city police and sheriff's department review of the contract with SDSU and the agreements, and a good discussion was had, and I think they'll be able to work out most of their, their issues. Attended the, on the 1st, the police night out, and I did recommend that they get some new front tires on that ATV. I said, "You roll that off the trailer in wet grass, you're not going to move it." Rear tires, I think, looked okay, but it was nice to see all the, all the law enforcement out there. I think the attendance was, I was there early, but it was already picking up. And I think if they continue it every year, it'll get better and better. And, and I liked the, the, the location in the park. I think that increased attendance, having the bouncy houses and the popcorn and everything for the kids was, was a draw, so I appreciate that. On the 3rd, I attended Achievement Days, along with a few of the other commissioners, and we served. I, I had water. I think you had coffee, and you were carrying tables, and Larry was taking tickets, so I covered all your reports already, but, thank you.
Krogman?
All right, uh, July 26th, we had a beta meeting, um, and, again, ridership was way ahead of last year, it used to be. So we needed to work hard to accommodate everybody. And so they are working on the Arts Festival. They get a lot of, moved a lot of people from different parking lots for parking with the Arts Festival, and continue to work with that, the Arts Festival group and that. Attended on July 27th, the Swiftell Advisory Meeting there. Just went over upcoming events, reports and stuff like that. They did want to extend a big thank you to 4H for working with them on the accommodation of, of not, you know, having the show arena in the arena to accommodate the Al Jackson concert the next day. And so you just wanted to really extend a thank you to the 4H leadership for their, working with them on, on moving the, moving the showing of the animals into the Blue Ring. Love to see how it went for 4H, I'm not sure, but obviously it helped out. Swiftell quite a bit for the Al Jackson, Al Jackson concert, which was full house, 50s, 5,200 people, I think, or something like that, so, pretty packed. Anyway, and then went to a meeting on July 28th. We met out at the OAC with officials from Game Fish and Parks. Commissioner Jensen and I met out there with them. We had one come from here, and one come from Sioux Falls. And, you know, they're very familiar with the building, so they really knew the building, but we discussed potential offices and partnership with them, and they seemed very excited about that, potential office space and lease and rent, and how we could all work together to utilize that building. And I think we got a pretty good start with them, and, and it was, it was a very good meeting, I, I think. And I look forward to working with them in the future, and I think the OAC building with them too. And then I, on the 31st, I met with Dwayne Chapel from the Growth Partnership Board, along with another board member, and just gave me update on, on the plans that are going on out there, and potential for new buildings that are going to be potentially going up there, so that's going well. That TIF district is, is being paid off, so that's going well also, so that'll be taken care of very soon, and they're looking forward to getting some more buildings out there. And then went August 3rd to the 4H barbecue and served coffee. And the 4H barbecue was in the big arena now, which made a huge difference. Everybody was in the same spot, rather than going to three, four different areas for rooms and stuff, and serving out right in the front area there. I think that worked out really well, and stuff too, so it was easier to serve and see everybody. And there's a lot of people there. I don't know if they ended up, took a number, if you heard anything at all.
I haven't heard.
I know they were expecting 800. I'm not sure if they got there or not, but, how's tables before? Good, good. That's all.
Okay, on the 27th, um, in a meeting with Brookings County Housing and Redevelopment Corp. Company, Rich Galbreth is a new part owner of the, of the company. He's excited. There's a new gal in the office, Jessica Wolf is her name. They're, it went through their audit. They have a very good audit, no reports. They were impressed with the new auditing company that they hired. The state is, usually, usually get paid back about 90% return. Uh, it's been about 74%. They're still waiting on some funding, so we're a little bit behind. And most of their cost was website development. I, but it's positive, and they got about 95 people on a waiting list for housing help, so. Our next meeting's the 19th of October, and there will be a audit coming to us to look at, final, so. On the 28th, Commissioner Krogman himself, with the GF, we met with the GFMP out at the OAC. Like Ryan said, it was a very good meeting. I look forward also to working with them. On the 1st of August, we had a jail expansion meeting. We went in detail, going over where we were at and what we're doing. On September 5th, BKV Architects will be giving a presentation to the county commission. And then on the 11th, we will have, host an open house, somewhat like before, at 7:00 on September 11th. And we'll, they'll, I guess in their presentation, we'll go over what we've got so far. On, also attended the Achievement Days, pork barbecue. Like Ryan said, a lot of people. I'm not sure we were HD 800, but it was, it was, I think it was great. They had it all in one, one facility. Everybody was seated together. They started the fashion review, and people got to see that, and I thought it was a good deal. I then went over to the Round Robin and congratulated the winners of the Round Robin and stuff. But overall, I, I didn't hear any complaints of moving over to the ICE Arena. It, it worked well. So we'll see how, I compliment, talking with Sonia, she complimented that the Swiftell staff has always been very accommodating, and they did another good job, so. And then on Friday, Senior Companions, I went up to Watertown Recognition Event. We have one senior companion that lives here in Brookings, Lorraine Crocky. She's been with them for three years. It's a, just a companion program. And you go out and help the person that needs help, maybe going to get their prescriptions, going shopping or something, and you get paid back two, two to $3 an hour, and then you get mileage. But it's a great program. A former resident of Brookings, Pam Merchant, is actually a new recruiter for the area. She's trying to recruit more senior companions. There is a criteria of, of income, it's income based. If you make more, you can't be a senior companion, receive this, but I thought it was a great event. It's kind of amazing, some of these people, the amount hours they've given to the other people. And it's, it's a pretty good event, so. Otherwise, that's all I, all I have.
Larry? So we're going to see the next set of plans on September 5th?
Yes.
Okay, and right now, y'all are planning to have a open house kind of thing on the 11th, okay? What happens if those plans aren't acceptable to the commission?
That's what we're having the, on the 5th, we'll have an open discussion.
Uh-huh.
On the 11th, we'll have the open house. On the 26th, my intentions are to bring the board, we'll discuss, and we'll decide how we're going to move forward.
Okay.
If we go back to...
So we're not approving something on the 5th?
No.
It's just an educational?
Right.
Okay, a presentation on what they're thinking now?
Presentation of what we're, what they've been working on. And then, like I said, on the, on the 11th, we'll have that open house. And then our next scheduled meeting would be on the 26th, and then we'd, as a commission, would decide how we'd move forward. If we move back, go back to the board of adjustment, or do we, whatever we're going to do, we'll discuss it in commission meeting, so. I think that's, you have anything to add?
I don't think so. I think that's, I think jail expansion is going to meet sometime in between there again.
Yeah, we have a, um, meeting that...
I think right after, don't we, we meet right after the commission meeting, I think?
On the 5th, yep.
So if there's any feedback that we get from the commission, the jail expansion can also discuss that then with, with the architects at that time.
Right. They'll be here. Otherwise, um...
I'd move that we go into executive session.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
In accordance with SDSCL.
Executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, parentheses 3, propose litigation contract negotiations.